Good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday. Middle of June already, amazing. Summer school's underway and all of that sort of thing. So we look forward to hearing all that you have to share this morning, Mr. Superintendent. But before we begin that, if you would all stand with me, please, for the pledge.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have a lot to be shared with us this morning, so we will move right into our items. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning to the board, and we have staff here this morning. Good morning to them as well. We have two presentations today. First off, we've got a new project. We're calling it a diversity project that just kicked off really in HR. And I really wanted to share this with the board. It's a fluid project. It's a work in progress, but I think you're going to be impressed with that. So I'll call up Mr. Sanchez and Dr. Sanchez. Do you need help? Dr. Prince?
He's got it.
He's got it?
He's got it.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Holly, Board members, Superintendent Gent. It's my pleasure to present an update on the diversity project. We've been working on this project for about three months. And before I get started, I want to thank you for your leadership because this project was inspired by the courageous conversations that we've been having in our board workshops, in our board meetings this year. And I know our board have always had these courageous conversations, but they've become a little more focused, given the times that we're in nationwide. Essentially, what our diversity project is, is a website where we have different diverse cohorts that we've identified, that we want to celebrate and represent, that are affiliated with our school district or work within our school district. We did start this project off with creating a vision statement. And essentially, the vision of this project is to enhance and promote the board and superintendent's vision of a diverse workforce in St. Lucy Public Schools that encompasses our diverse student population and community. This vision statement comes from my conversations with my immediate supervisor, Dr. Prince. Consistently over the past five and a half years, there's one question that he consistently asks all of his direct reports. And that's essentially, what else can we do to help the board, the superintendent, to promote or enhance their vision, their initiatives, or their goals? So this is where this vision statement came from. During our conversation, he tasked me with finding out what else, if there is anything we can do from HR perspective. And together, I got together with our coordinator of retention and recruitment, Ms. Molly Dunn, and together we came up with the concept of the diversity project. Now, we've got a few goals that we're trying to accomplish within this project. Number one, we want to celebrate the current diversity in our workforce. We've made some good strides. We know that we have a long way to go. We know that this is not the answer to, or the solution to, the overall diversity question that we're having. But we think that this is a good building block, specifically when we start looking at pathways for black males and increasing our gaps with employing more Hispanics in our workforce. We also wanted to highlight our historically black and community universities, our HBCUs, highlight our Hispanic-serving institutions, our HSIs, our Divine Nine, Greek Fraternities and Sororities. Of course, we've got distinguished minority educators that we recognize every year from the Night of the Stars. We have a very big retired educator community that is very actively involved in our school district right now. And we also have district diverse leaders that not only encompass the principals and assistant principals, but our school district being so large, we have numerous fields and professions where we have diverse district leaders as well. And then the last one is the Community Champions. This was a very recent addition from one of our board workshops. Mr. Inglesall was having some conversation about enhancing and building programs to help our diversity. And then also, Mrs. Richardson was having some dialogue about that we've got some living, breathing heroes that are walking among us today. We need to celebrate them and celebrate their achievements, and celebrate the achievements that they've accomplished in our community. So this was an additional add based off of the conversations that you were having here. Some of the benefits that we hope to achieve from this project is, of course, we want to enhance the board and superintendent's vision, continue to help bring together a community. And we've witnessed this. We've had over 150 people come in to take photos. And then we've had about 12 to 15 individuals create video content for us. And you can see the excitement and anticipation as they were here. It's a small community. Everyone kind of knows each other. It's just one more reason for people to get together and then also get together for a good reason and celebrating our diversity in our school district. Of course, we want this to also be another avenue to build stronger relationships with our HBCUs and HSI institutions. And ideally, you know, one of the biggest goals is to increase our diversity in our workforce. When we increase diversity in our workforce, since we're the largest employer in the county, we increase the diversity in our community. The photos and videos that we've taken, we're going to use these to recruit diverse candidates that look like them. And this is important from an HR aspect. When we are recruiting certain demographics, we know that, especially when it comes to the black community and Hispanic community, it's more of a relationship-based link to the community when we're recruiting individuals from these demographics. So this is another component that this diversity project will help us do because as people migrate to the page, they're going to see people that look like them. And I think that's a very important concept when you're considering moving to a new location. Are there resources there for me? Are there people that I know that I can work together with, be affiliated with? And so this webpage helps us display that information to interested candidates coming to them. And I'm going to give you an example of that on the next slide of how we're going to use these photos and videos to recruit. And of course, we want to continue to enhance building programs for our students, utilizing mentoring leadership with our diverse leaders that currently work here and our educators that work here, and continue to build career pathways for diverse minorities that work within the school district, including black males, and increasing our Hispanic leadership throughout the school district as well. Now, our HR department has a very unique, dynamic and innovative way of recruiting. I don't know of any other school district that recruits the way that we do. Yes, we still use social media. We still go to colleges and universities to recruit and recruiting events. Now that everything's been opened back up, we still continue to do that. And we still hold career fairs here at the district office. Most recently, we had one last week. But we recruit by brand. St. Lucy Schools is a brand, and it's a high-quality brand. And if you can see our results over the past six years, it's an exceptional, high-quality brand. And so what we've done is we've branded on different channels, whether it be YouTube and specifically using digital marketing. And we use concepts that are consumer-based marketing, which is how large corporations are selling products to us now, using digital marketing. And it's, just to give a quick example, it's very similar to when you're surfing the internet and you're looking at clothing or something to buy. And as you continue to change pages in the internet, that product you're looking at keeps following you. So it becomes almost divine intervention of, I need to buy this product. And so that's one of the concepts of our recruiting efforts. The other one is based in tourism marketing. And tourism marketing, if you look at the, how counties and states promote their tourism to come visit their counties or come visit their states, it's very similar because the brand or the county just kind of just keeps popping up into your feeds. And that's one of the ways that we utilize our recruiting efforts. This is a photo of one of our employees. This is Jewel Edwards. She is the first-year Teacher of the Year. She's also a Promise is a Promise recipient, graduate of Lincoln Park Academy, also a graduate of Florida A&amp;M University and HBCU. And then she's also a Greek fraternity member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority. And what we will do is, we will take this photo and we will create a digital fence around Florida A&amp;M U. And we will push this photo content onto anyone that has a cellphone or a laptop device. As they're surfing through, if they live within this five-mile radius or they're on campus, our content will be pushed to them. Once they click on this photo, it'll then bring them back to our diversity page and directly target specific individuals from our HBCUs. Once they're interested and click on it, they'll be able to come to our webpage and then get more information and again, be able to see the diversity that's contained within our school district. Another example would be, we're going to use videos as well to do this. And this is just an example of some of those videos.
Hi, I am Jewel Edwards, and I am St. Lucy Public Schools 2021 Outstanding First-Year Teacher of the Year. I currently teach eighth grade years history at the Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucy. I graduated from Lincoln Park Academy in 2018 with an Associate's of Arts degree and as a Promise is a Promise scholar. I'm grateful for Promise is a Promise because not only did it give me a career, but it gave me the opportunity to invest in the students the same way my teachers invested in me. After high school, I attended and graduated from Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University, where I also joined Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated is a community-conscious, action-oriented organization whose goal is to put our community first. Going from a student to a teacher in St. Lucy Public Schools has been a phenomenal experience. I love working in St. Lucy Public Schools simply because we're all dedicated to the same cause, ensuring the success of each student. And that is why you should join us in St. Lucy Public Schools.
That's a good video, right? Very powerful. Now, when we look at our website, again, as Mr. Gent stated, this website is probably about 80% completed. We still have some more photos that we want to take. And we still have some videos that we've scheduled with some Community Champions. And we've got some of them, but we're still waiting to complete the content of this. But the main page essentially is our diversity page. It gives our vision statement. We do have the "Facts at a Glance" video embedded, so as soon as they land on this page, they'll be able to click on that video and obtain the information of what our schools are like, what our graduation rates are like, and just obtain more information about our school district. The second page here is our diverse leaders. Again, just want to emphasize that, you know, our school district not only encompasses diverse leaders of principals and assistant principals, but we have managers, coordinators, directors that are diverse leaders that currently work within our school district as well. Our diverse educator page, this page was, we created this page, let it load here. When we speak about diversity, you know, we speak about diversity and inclusion, and there are people that are minorities, but they don't identify with either being black or Hispanic. So we did create a separate page to be able to display our other diverse educators that work within our school district. Of course, our Distinguished Minority Educators, and these are the individuals that we celebrate every year at the Night of the Stars. Again, you can see the video of Ms. Jewel Edwards embedded in here. And then also our recipient award winners of Distinguished Minority Educators of the Year finalists and the winners, along with the principal and assistant principal. Like I said, we have very robust and dedicated retired educators that actively participate within our school district. We did ask them when they came to take their photos or videos if, to wear their Greek apparel or the apparel from the university that they graduated from. And so you'll see everyone's dressed just a little bit different, but you'll also see some familiar faces on here in this page. Our HBCU alumni page, we wanted to ensure that this was in here as well. This page and specifically our Divine Nine page, again, these are relationship-based, a little more relationship-based. So we wanted people to, as we promote their videos and their photos around their schools, that they're able to, were able to take the video of the people wearing the apparel of the school, which helps make a quicker connection, which will also help generate more traffic back to our website. And so everyone that's in here is wearing their school apparel. We also have another one for the HSI, Hispanic-serving institutions, to make sure that we're able to display that we have individuals that are graduating from Hispanic-serving institutions. And FIU and also IRSE are big HSI-serving institutions as well because they have high graduates of Hispanics there. Our Divine Nine page, like our HBCU page, is very critical, again, because we want to display that there are resources for you when we look at these two specific groups. There's individuals that you have working here already. And you can see that we wanted to make sure that we've gave every Greek organization their own webpage. This webpage will, as we're finished, will contain the links to their local chapters, their main chapters. And then when we're done, direct contact information for those presidents of those chapters. So if they have questions or they have any kind of needs, that they can directly get in contact with these individuals. And it's just another resource to have for them. These are the distinguished gentlemen of the alphas. And then also our beautiful kappas in pink and green as well. And then our last page is our Community Champion page. Again, this is just another resources, resource, based off the conversations that you were having, that we have some living, breathing legends that are still around, that we need to celebrate. We need to celebrate their achievements and their accomplishments, not only in the school district, but in the community. And we also have champions that are out there that may not work for the school district, but they support us, and they support us heavily. Like we've got Larry Lee, Sean Boyle, and Will Armstead on here, two good friends to the school district. I will show you this one quick video here of Queen Townsend.
My name is Queen Townsend, and I worked in the school system of St. Lucie County for 37 years, doing various things as a teacher, as a principal, as an assistant principal, and I retired as assistant superintendent. Over those years, I saw many changes in St. Lucie County, but the one thing that was constant, St. Lucie County was all about children. So if you have a love for children, a desire to make a difference, and a desire to be a lifelong learner, as well as continued growth and advancement, St. Lucie County Public Schools is the place for you.
So our next phase will be to continue to get more people to get their photos, videos. But we also want to continue to, one, make sure that we have career pathways for our minority employees, including black males, and also promoting our biggest gap right now, which is be Hispanics diversity in our workforce, just by creating mentorship, coaching opportunities, deliberate identification of Hispanic and black applicants for talent and future leadership And I do want to thank a few people. This was a very comprehensive project that crossed numerous departments. It took a lot of resources. I do want to thank Dr. Prince for championing this project and for ensuring that we had the resources needed to complete it. Of course, Dr. Kevin Perry and Latricia Woolard, who was on our committee of four. You know, I knew that the two of them were embedded into this community, but I just didn't know how deep that it went. They were instrumental in bringing in our photos for our HBCUs and also our Divine Nine. So without them, we wouldn't have completed this project, so I just want to thank them. Of course, Molly Dunn, who is our coordinator of retention and recruitment, who, with her and I, created the concept of this project. And in just a few short months, she'll be graduating with a master's degree in HR. So she's well on her way to being a HR professional and a HR leader. I want to thank Lydia Martin and Terrence O'Leary because both of their departments dedicated a lot of resources to this project. Specifically, Edward Morales created the print material that we had displayed up front in front of your offices, if you came in and saw that, so that we had material and something for individuals to come and see when they come and take their photos or do their videos. And then, of course, I want to thank Samantha Davis because she put the website together, embedded the photos, embedded the videos. And this was a lot of content for her to not only create, but to embed and to make it look, make it look good. And with that, thank you for your time, and I'll open it for any questions or comments.
You want to get the microphone off there?
I'm absolutely thrilled at the work that has been done. And not just thrilled, I'm amazed at what great minds can do. And, you know, we're all educators in some way, and this is what education is all about. And I want to thank the board for the conversations that we've had and the superintendent and your openness to discuss these issues and your several different places of what you have done. You know, this is important for all of our children. And Dr. Prince, you know, you and I have been with that committee. We've got something we can really take back to them now. And as far as the work that we have done in the community, I'm talking about a committee in the community, in which I believe Ms. Richardson, Ms. Holly, and Mr. Gent was a part of that conversation. It was a virtual. And some of you out there, Lydia, you were a part of it. Helen, you were a part of it. I just, I'm thrilled. You know, I'm at one of those moments right now. I can stand up and give you a standing ovation. It's inside of me, but I'm going to contain myself. But I thank you. I thank you for your work. You were part of the, you were on that virtual as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we've met since then, Dr. Prince and I, with this group. And we've been talking about ways that we can implement to improve, you know, to simply improve where we are now and to go to another level. And I really do appreciate you going back and taking the whole of this in HR and each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick point real quick. Great job. I'm really impressed, and I learned a lot. I have one question for you, and I don't want to put you on the spot because you may not know. But this has always concerned me through the years, even when my own children are in school. I'm talking about the high schools now, just in the high schools. Dr. Sanchez, can you tell me how many male educators we have in the high schools? Maybe not the number, or percentage of male, I'm talking about teachers now, teachers in our six high schools. How many are male percentage?
That's a good question, Mr. Kelly. I'll have to go and pull that data, and I'll be able to get back to you with that. I just don't know it off the top of my head.
I'm sure it's very, very, very small. Okay? Probably, sure.
77% of educators are females in the United States now.
I can't hear you.
77% of educators are females in the United States, I believe.
But in our, I want to know.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't have that specific information. We'll get it for you. But we'll mirror that for sure.
Maybe we can, not now, but maybe we can just, the three of us get together and I'll tell you my concerns about that.
Rob, thank you. You and your team did a phenomenal job. Excellent. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I don't know whether to do a backstab. I don't know what to do. I am just so...
I just, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Thank you so very much.
I want to make a comment about Dr. Prince. Within these meetings that we've had from the beginning, he has been so open and willing to hear and listen and share. And it's, you have been quite a blessing in this group, and I just want to honor you and thank you for your work.
All right, so we should probably end it there and call it a day. But let's, I do, you know, we've, let's clap. This is a great job. That was fantastic. Everybody in the room has had a part of that, and this is very, very unique. And, you know, when you see something new that you haven't seen before, you know, and it's right here and the brains behind it, it's local and including the folks, it's just phenomenal and very, very proud of that and proud of the work that they have done. I didn't mean to take over, Mrs. Holly, before, if you had anything.
No.
Okay. That's the clicker, and that's the thing. All right. So we're going to move on now. And for our two new board members, what we do each year at this time in June is kind of do a state of the district of the year that we've had. And this year, it's going to be a little bit different because this year was different. But on your table, you should have found a book that looks like this. I'm going to call it our yearbook, and you guys can have them signed by staff afterwards, like we do in the high schools. They'll find their picture and sign it. But really, what this represents is the year in review. And I've always done it at this time, but we've never really come forward with a document that's this, that's this detailed. So what I'll do today is do kind of a summary of that. The summary is really in your PowerPoint presentation. But I encourage you, and I know some of you are already looking through that, to look through it because this is where we get into the weeds. This was made, this was developed by our own team here. You saw Edward Morales on there, who runs our print shop and Lydia's shop and the different departments. So this was done with, you know, right here in St. Lucie County. What we'll do with this as well is we'll share it among our schools, we'll share it among our community partners. At the very beginning, you'll see you all are in there. We've got some speeches. We've got our guiding pillars, then we've got our table of contents. And then what I'm going to talk about today, it's in here in more detail about what we did. I don't want to underscore the past year that we've had. And we met with our principals two weeks ago. Jack and Troy were able to attend that. Jack and Troy were able to attend that, and I think they were able to really sense the energy and the enthusiasm of our principals. And we kind of celebrated and recognized our principals and the accomplishments of the district at that time, but we didn't go into the detail I'll go into today. So, if you have your PowerPoint, or it's going to be up on the, I got to do two things here. I got to push it, and here we go. So, what I do each year is I come up with a group, a set of goals. This year, there were three goals, because at this time last year, we had been out of the schools when spring break came. That was it. When spring break came and our kids went home, they didn't come back until August. And they didn't come back till the, I believe it was the third or fourth week in August. So, our students were really gone for almost five months. And we had gone to a totally virtual teaching platform, which we had pivoted literally within two weeks to do that. So, and that was something that was done across the state of Florida. So, when I set my goals up at this time last year, it looked different than any other previous year, because normally, my goals are associated with academic performance. Different areas that we need to work on are areas where we need to tighten up. And so, this year was a little bit different with the goals there, and you can see the three goals, and I'll go over those with you. The first one, to ensure a robust instructional delivery system, whether in person, virtually, or as a combination of both, because a year ago today, everything was virtual. We still weren't really had clear direction from the state as to what we were going to be allowed to do or not to do. And as you were aware, then we were able to offer two platforms or two learning instructional delivery systems, one in person and one virtual. Naturally, and everybody remembers the safety and health for all of our employees and what we were going through and continue to go through, that we're not going to stop doing these, because we're in a better place right now. And then, goal three, to strengthen really our SEL, our social emotional well-being and mental health needs for our students. If you remember last year at this time, the academic piece was second. We were more concerned about the social emotional needs of our students, because we didn't see them. We couldn't see them every day. Our teachers do a remarkable job, and our principals, of looking at the students and making sure they're okay. Well, when it's a virtual world, and Dr. Mills, you were part of that virtual world for a year, it's hard for the instructors to really see the students and what's going on. There's, I'm sure somebody's done a blooper of online learning in the home and some funny things that we've seen. But it was a tremendous effort by our staff that's come together, and so that's what I want to talk about here for the next few minutes. Within the first goal, and I know that's small to see, but it's in your, it is in the handout that you've got, we needed to really develop what we call an ICP, an instructional continuity plan. There's three components of that, content delivery, mobile devices, and then internet access. And so, Dr. Wild, her shop, along with Terrence's shop and other, when I say shops, other departments as well, we really had to come up with an online learning system, an online learning for students that were at home, but not only that, but for the students that would be quarantined. And you all saw that each day, the number of students that were being quarantined and would go back home and then to continue their instructional delivery system. So, it's easy to put on a couple of slides, but it was a mammoth, gargantuan effort. And some of the other team are here and behind me over here with Kim Jay and Liz and some of the, and some of the team as well. They developed 956 lessons for Canvas. We'll talk about that in a minute. They expanded our summer programs. We'll talk about that in a second as well. The expanded summer school, we're in our second day of summer school. Yesterday, we had approximately 74% of our students show up for the first day. So, that was, that's a good number, because we've been out of school for several weeks now. And our executive directors have been out in the school centers. I had a chance to visit six schools yesterday. I'll give a shout out to River's Edge. They had balloons up everywhere, and we wanted to make sure, not because your wife's the principal there, but it was, they had balloons up out in the bus loading zone and, you know. Yeah, she did miss me. And it was, it was really cool. And then, to go into the classrooms at the different school sites and see what they were doing, the kids were having a blast. They were doing, some of them were doing the STEM stuff, some of them were doing other things, because we want this not to be summer school. We really wanted to call it almost like a camp, where they're going to, they're going to get the academic support that they need, but we really want to do this where a place that they want. We want them to say that coming to school is the best part of their day this summer. So, that started out as well, and we have approximately 9,000 students. We'll have an update later on this week as to how we're doing. Moving on, training. For us to pivot and go completely to online, you can imagine the fears that parents had, but you should have seen the fear that even our own educators have when we talked about going completely online for a while. And in order to help support them, we had to train them. And you can see over 4,000 teachers and staff have been trained from my school during the course of the year. We did tutorials, we did bookings, hybrid models. I'm not going to read these to you. The infrastructure, this is in Terrence's shop, you know, I want you to look at those numbers there. Over the past year, we've relocated or re-imaged or deployed 40,000 laptops. We've purchased 20,000 new ones for K6. We've put out another five for employees and 10,000 devices for students to ensure we have a one-on-one. This is really where our first, the first phase of the dollars that came down from the federal government went. Another program that we have that we really haven't talked a lot about is what's called Broke Fix. You know, when you get these at home, something's going to break, and we serviced over 2,600 folks, where they would come in on certain days right here behind the building, and it was like a drive-through, just like a drive-through for McDonald's. They would pull up, our staff would take their computers, either fix it on the spot or give them another computer to take, so the students wouldn't miss anything. And then, 1,000 phone calls a month from the technical service desk as well to help support our parents and community. I moved to goal two, to provide a safe and healthy learning and work environment. We developed a safe set of return guidelines. In here on page 10, you'll see, I didn't bring them with me, but on page 10, you'll see kind of an example of them, if you want to take a look. The print shop was very, very busy, and the communications department, and many of these we shared with you at the previous meetings, but let's stay healthy together, you know, and all the signs, the signage that we put up at the school centers, as well as our safe, our return to school plan, which I think is about 73 pages long. So, that was a very important piece with this. We have a COVID response team at each school center. That's the custodial coordinators, the area managers, working with them to make sure that our schools are clean. Again, with goal number two, we were, and I'm very, very proud of this, because this was some heavy conversations behind the scenes, where we're able to bring in and make sure that our employees were vaccinated, those that wanted to be vaccinated. We were really the first in the Treasure Coast to do that. Now, we have clinics for the students 12 and older through our Florida Community Health and the CDR Health, as well as the local health department. We had a screening tool for our parents. We had COVID leads at each school to manage the positive cases. That was a day-to-day, and you saw, you all would see the daily updates that we would send you, and the tremendous amount of work that was done at our school centers to track the students down, to make sure that they were quarantined. All of that, you know, is a well-oiled machine, but the effort that went in behind it was just unbelievable. Goal number three, to deliver the services of social emotional well-being, SEL and mental health needs. Again, to us, last year at this time, that was more important than the academics. They're right there, one and two, but we hadn't seen our students, again, coming back in August for five months. So, we had new staff, new mental health counselors, guidance counselors, worked in and expanded with our local agencies. We created a department of social and emotional learning, and you can see some of the things we implemented, suicide instruction, the signs of that, crisis prevention, mental health, youth mental health, positive behavior, equitable discipline practices, and expanded healthcare with the district. So, those were the three goals that I established within this document, within the yearbook. I'll just call it the yearbook. You will see the details of how we accomplished that. Want to move on? We always talk about our graduation rates, and most of you were able to participate in that, and you could see, these are our unofficial numbers, because we won't get our official numbers from the state until December or January. And so, our unofficial numbers right now, you can see that everybody is maintaining where we are in the high 90s. I think what's important here is that there's only three other districts in the state that have had four consecutive years of 90% plus in the state of Florida. It's a federal graduation rate, so you're comparing apples to apples. So, we can, the whole state's compared the same way, the whole country's compared the same way, and you can see almost 20% increase over the last years, last six years. And if we break it down, Central, you know, over 98%, you can see the amount of money, over 655 graduates. You see the scholarships, almost 8 million, and 13 going into the Promises, a promise, which we saw earlier today. We go over to Westwood, 350 graduates, 25, over 2,500,000 in scholarships. You should see the grad rate will be right around the 96, 97% range, 13 students with Promises, Promise. You see the information from LPA. I won't read it to you. I'll just show it to you. That's right there. Again, that's in your handout. PSL High School, up around 98%. Centennial. The Titans, Treasure Coast High School. And it's kind of interesting to see the competition now among the high schools, not only in sports, but in graduation rates. And as I had shared with the board before, Mosaic, 100% of the students that were in Mosaic graduated, and a great program that they do there. And in our performance-based, 68 students, which we celebrated last week with the graduation. And what's important to remember here, too, as we shared before with our graduation rate, we do not have a diversity gap, any kind of a gap, but that we're at the same place with our Hispanic, our African-American, our white students, are right around the 93% range, and that will continue into this year. And so, we're very, very proud of that. When I talked to the principals last week and congratulated them, when we went into this school year, we didn't make any excuses. We knew that this was going to be a very, very challenging year, and there's a book that many people are reading from Maxwell that says Change Your World, and one of the things he says in there, that, you know, they say you can make progress, you can make excuses, but you can't do both. And so, that was kind of our mantra. There may be specific reasons, when there may be unique challenges that we're facing, but we're going to hit them head-on. And Simon Sinek, I shared this with the principals as well, a crisis is the great revealer. And our country was in a crisis, and our state, and, you know, education was in a crisis. And really, what did it reveal about Saint Lucie County? Sinek says that in a crisis, you see the, you see things that people don't see before. And what did we see about our district? Well, we saw the resiliency, we saw the courage, we saw the strong foundation that this district is really housed on, thus, the solid as a rock is our theme. And also, with our principals, we shared it in a musical, Ashford and Simpson's song, Solid as a Rock. I'm not going to play it today, but to the disappointment of our team. But, you know, it really showed our culture. It showed our culture, it showed the trust that we have for each other, knowing that we can get things done together. Again, no excuses were made, we just got after it. As the challenge escalates, the need for teamwork elevates, and this is something that I wanted to share with you, and they're in the room right now, and they really don't get their due, and many of the department heads are here as well. But we do district department surveys twice a year, and you have it, it's a handout that you have, and you can take it with you and look at that. And you can see over the four, five-year period, the surveys, and you can see this year, the overall average, it's on a scale of one to five, and, you know, this was the highest, this was the highest of 4.56. Anything, when you get into the fours and you get above into the fours, is really good. The 1% and 2% ratings are where people would disagree or highly disagree with something that's going on. And so, we look at these very, very closely to see what's the level of service that we're performing for our school centers. We always say that we're here to serve the schools, it's not the other way around. And so, when you look at that and break it down, can anybody read that? It's all good. It's all good. And trust me, and the board members, you have that handout there as well. What we want to do is tie this into our guiding pillars. We have four guiding pillars here in the school district, teaching and learning, which is our main core, our main function, really followed by 1B, safe and caring schools, talent development, and then communication, community involvement, and customer service. So, I just want to go through that very, very quickly. And this is really in our pillar number one, office of teaching and learning, and you can see that we talked about it a moment, where they had to really change to go to a hybrid model, whether we had students at home or whether we had them in the building. We had to develop curriculums, we had to develop units of study in Canvas. And that's, you know, now that we look at it, and you say almost 1,000 units of study, but the work that went behind that is just tremendous. Canvas is the platform that houses all of these things on curriculum. You saw that talent development, I'll talk more about that in a moment. We had to train our staffs up, not just our teachers, but everybody, everybody in the district, in CTE, I'll hit that in a moment, federal programs. We stayed right there, and we were able to get some extra dollars. I mean, hit this a little, this probably more detailed than I did the other programs, because this is one of our core missions, but, you know, they'd established the My School Online, the curriculum that it was at home. Dr. Mills, you're probably more familiar with it than anybody else in the room, except for the ones that developed it, because you were involved in this daily. We set expectations for our teachers, we collaborated with all the different departments here, and student assignment, and HR, and everyone. You know, we always had engaged the union, everything that we did. You can see that it was a very smooth year, working with our union partners to work out any challenges that we would have. And we got the DOE approval on this, as I mentioned before, the different units of study through the Canvas. The curriculum highlights, these are platforms, these are places, links that you can go to, that our teachers would go to. We had to train them up so that they had access to other opportunities for the students and the parents and the grandparents and the caregivers to monitor what was going on. As we just talked about, we're right in, just kicking off our summer school, our Learning Adventure Camps, I shouldn't call it summer school, but our camps. We should put dinosaurs out in front of every school to attract them, like the Jurassic Park stuff, and put that on our marquees. We had to figure out how to do that, Terrence, get a real, get some stuff in. I'm thinking here now, getting off track. The camp sessions, as you're aware, in two-week sessions, and the middle and high schools started last week with their credit recovering. We also have our 21st Century Sites going on. Every year, we have our Early Childhood Conference. This year, we did that virtually. We get a lot of tremendous support from the different agencies that are in the community. That was very successful. With our CTE, over almost $500,000 in grants, you can see the pre-apprenticeships at PSL High, the pre-apprenticeship for outboard machinery, out, I'm sorry, we'll just call it boat motors, over at Centennial High School, and then pharmacy tech at Westwood, and then entrepreneur entrepreneurship that's going on. We look at our numbers. Last year, there was a little bit of a dip in our CTE and our industry certifications, and that's because some of the certifications have to be done in person, particularly in the area of CPR and things, we'd have to have a live person in front of you. And you can see we're bouncing right back this year with that, one of the leaders in the state of Florida. You can see our new veterinary, we shared that the other day, the best story, Mr. Kelly was the one, you know, when you mentioned that your neighbor across the street, you know, was a student there and diagnosed, you know, what he thought was wrong with the dog. I thought you just didn't feed it enough, but it was more than that. And so, you know, just, and that's just the representation of the fantastic programs that we have going on all around. We were able to partner with the EDC, work very, very closely with them, and really to just find our students jobs. There was also a, the TCBS, Treasure Coast Business Summit, that was done. None of the board was able to make that. This is one of the highlights of the year for me personally, because we were able to have all of our schools represented, they had their booths there, they were cooking, they had robots, they were drone flying, and I had an opportunity to speak to the group and several hundred people that were there. And one of our, and I mentioned this the other day, the young man out at Central High School, who is in our aerodynamics class through Emmy Riddle, currently, right now, is a, works for an insurance agency, makes $30 an hour. He's a FAA certified drone pilot, and he flies the drones over buildings for an insurance company, and he makes $30 an hour, which averages over $60,000 a year. And what's also cool is he's a student, has a disability, a physical disability, and is still able to do that. We recognized him in front of the crowd, and it was really personally one of the highlights of the year for me to be there and watch our students and our federal programs. You can see that we did very well there, those competitive grants that are there. These are grants that we have to compete with other, with other school districts across the country on, and we were able to get the SIG4 grant, which helps a few of our schools, the Magnet School Grant, the two CTE Career Pathway Grants, Professional Development for the Arts, just to name a couple of those, our Wallace, the elite program that we have going on. And then Title I, these are the students that we serve, and some of the statistics that we have within that, and the trainings and the programs that we do there. And then, Secondary Program Highlights, the SATs, the SATs, we do a, we get our students tested in that, grades 11 and 12, particularly at the 11th grade level, and this helps prepare them for college or the world to work, whichever direction that they go in. The HBCU, we did that virtually this year, thank Kevin, and we'll talk about that in a moment, and we were still able to get over 300 students to attend. Next year, we'll get that back in person. And moving over to ESE, unbelievable graduation rate, we're one of the tops in the state with our ESE students. And you can see there the numbers that's there, the 4.66, that's their, the survey that was done among the schools. That survey's done with the principals, it's anonymous, so they can tell it like it is there and write comments, and you can see that Bill's group is one of the highest-rated departments that we have, with some of the greatest challenges that we have. I don't know if you've ever seen the Project Search Program, that these are where our students go in to Martin Memorial and the tradition, and they work, they work jobs there in the hospital. I had a chance two years ago to go in there and watch the students in the sense of pride that it does for the students. that it does for the students, as well as, as the culture that it does for the hospital, working with the students. And then many of them are able to get jobs when they get out of there as well. Another thing that was important is the disproportionality that students within discipline. We were not on any kind of a watch list from the state of Florida, our suspensions, particularly for African-American males, where we were on three years ago, and we had to use funds from the, from the IDEA funds, 15% of those, to address that issue for the last two years. There's been no findings there, and those numbers, and we've shared that before with the board members. 100% compliant with Medicaid audit, that's a big, big deal as well. In fact, all of our audits were successful this year. Our executive directors, these are the three supervisors, are the principals, it's Dan and Latricia and Adrian. And you can see the number there, 4.98, they get ranked the highest from their principals. And that's kind of unique, because the principals do the evaluations of them, and the principals, they don't know, you know, it's anonymous, so you don't know who that's coming from, but that shows the level of support. The other reason that you all receive is least amount of phone calls that you get from parents, is because they take care of it. And then when you do get that call, it'll go to them, and we'll find out what, you know, usually, there's two sides to every story, and the truth sometimes in the middle. They do a remarkable job with that, and can't stress that enough for what they do, working alongside with, with Dr. Prince in that as well. They report directly to, to Dr. Prince, and we have weekly meetings with them. So, a valuable, valuable service, worth the weight in gold there. Assessment accountability, this is our testing, and it goes on from June 14th to June 11th. What was unique about this year is that we had to be very, very creative in bringing back our My School students and keep them separate from our regular students when we got into the heavy testy, testing season the last few months. And great job by, but, but we're doing assessments and, and throughout the year, and sending information up to the state of Florida. And Darryl, we didn't lose a pallet this year, right? We've, we've never lost anything, we've got everything up there. And again, they're behind the scenes, you really don't see them out in front anywhere. IT, one of the greatest challenges we had was in IT in Terrence's department, and you can just look at those numbers. I shared those a few moments ago, but that is just remarkable. We have to remember, too, that we were competing with the whole country, and maybe the whole world, but particularly the country, on trying to get computer devices into our schools, because everybody else was doing the same thing. The same thing goes true when we were trying to get our PPE equipment in there. So, you can see what we've done, and I hit that a little bit earlier. IT, again, you can see that we had multiple dashboards for tracking the students and the teachers, and forms for laptop distribution, food service, VPK, Mosaic, you know, everything changed, and just, you know, we were able to adapt to that, we were able to pivot to that, and IT did a remarkable job. Student assignment, again, another one of those groups that are behind the scenes, you know, you come in, you turn right, it's right there, but we really didn't have any interruption of service to our community. We had a lot of increase in traffic, particularly with home education numbers, and they were able to meet that need. And again, to work in partnership with community organizations to bring supplies. You know, when students come in, students can get supplies from our, our department, from our student assignment department, for students that are in need, and they work with different agencies, some of the fraternities and sororities that we talked about before as well, to make sure we take care of our students. Business services, we had a perfect audit this year, A-plus rating for, for our COPs, our certificates of participation, A-rating for our sales tax revenue bonds, Stable Outlook by Fitch, that's all important, those are, those are important things. Now, we'll get to hear from Michelle in a month, when we talk about our new budget. And then our district wellness program, taking care of our, our employees, 16, 16.2% increase in participation over the previous year. We had the vaccinations and those things. Guiding pillar number two is safe and caring schools. This is really our COVID-19 response. And we brought Bridget, is Bridget in here? There's Bridget, and where's Bill? Is Bill here? All right, Bill's over there, too. And so, Bill took on working with the adults and added responsibility. Bridget came in really to establish our, we have our safety manual, that's right here, the 70-page one. Working with our principals, getting the information, working, you know, just a non-stop, 24/7 job. Whenever, we talked, we joked with the principals, whenever they got a call from Bridget, that's who they didn't want to hear from, because they knew she was going to tell them that you're going to have to quarantine some students, and maybe this student tested positive. Bill would deal with the adults. We had a well-oiled machine. We kept our students safe, we kept our faculty safe, we kept our staff members safe, due to their efforts and their department efforts. And that's no small feat, and that will continue to remain in place on this year as well. Again, this, this is part of that, the COVID-19 response that the district had, and I talked about that a little bit in my opening comments, because that was one of the main, one of my three top goals that I had going in. SEL, we talked a little bit about that, 6,000 trainings. This was, again, we developed and established that department, and worked with districts, not only here in our own staffs, but across the state. They were asked also to present at two national conferences. We did virtual nights for families to engage them about SEL and what's going on. Safety and security, I have to put this in here, because Brian loves this, but right now, what his department's doing, they have, they have a 424-question book that they have to go out to every school site and do an assessment, and it takes, it's about that thick, and they're doing it right now, and they do a remarkable job of keeping our students safe as well. They got $130,000 this year, a grant from the DOE. The building numbering project, when you go around now to the school centers, you'll see the numbers that are on there, and that helps us in case there is an emergency or some kind of an incident on campus, where it's easily identifiable as to what building we're talking about. And also work with our emergency management plan on new procedures, reunifications, bomb threats, those kinds of things. Child nutrition services. Deborah, are you here? I saw Deborah. Deborah, I apologize, I did not mention her at the principal's meeting, and that has bugged me since then, so now you are getting more, you're getting your own moment. I will pause for you, you'll turn red now, and, but if you look there, 5 million meals have been served this past year. 5 million meals, 400,000 grab-and-goes, and that's continuing right now, the grab-and-goes. We're doing that and started that already, for those that are in need in our community. We trained our, you know, 375 highly-trained, nationally-certified employees. A lot of people, that's behind the scenes again, but the families and the community members, they benefit from this. And the last bullet's real important, three-quarters of all the items are produced from scratch right here. I guess that means they cook them, right? From scratch. So, great job with that department. Custodial services, their world changed, you know, not just the routine cleaning of schools, which is so important, but then we had a COVID response team, that was a custodial coordinator, the area managers, you know, whenever those buildings, every, you know, whenever the schools had to be cleaned, or classrooms develop, you know, came on when there was students that tested positive, or staff members that tested positive, and they went out 547 times to ensure that that, those buildings were clean, working on weekends, working in the evenings. Again, a great group of folks. And Carolyn, is she here? Okay, Carolyn's in the schools. But Carolyn coordinates that, and again, unsung heroes, our custodial folks, our maintenance folks, that keep our schools, our PPE, you know, warehouse, the PPE, this is the ordering, sort of talking about before, when we had to order all the masks, all the sanitizers. We've got 55-gallon drums at every school, where we, so we would never run out of hand sanitizer, and, and we'll keep those there as well. The facilities, making sure that we're doing the upgrades in the school centers, the bipolar, as we've mentioned to you guys before, we're going to be doing the HVAC system in the next, over the next several months and, and years at our school centers. And we'll do a, we'll do a five-year capital plan update for the board in, in the fall as to where we are with some of these, and you can just see rekeying the schools and the barriers that they put up. Student services, we talked a little bit about before, but making sure we're addressing the, the needs of the students, and we increased the staff members there, particularly social workers and mental health counselors to work with that. 25 schools were designated as the Model PBIS. We didn't make a big, we didn't, you know, this year, we didn't, we didn't really, I guess, celebrate that as much as we should have. I think the next slide shows that. But these are our schools that are PBS model schools, and there's 25 of them in the district, and great job that they do, great job that Bill Shop and his team does with working with them as well. And then transportation, they saved over $500,000 this year, just changing their routes. Jacunte, since he's come in, there has really transformed the department. I think, you know, again, one of our, probably some of the things that board members heard from before was from transportation a lot, that has gone down significantly under his leadership and, and the team that they work there, our seatbelt safety campaign things. And they're out on the road today, bringing the kids in the summer school. Legal department, another one of those ones, you really don't want to hear from them, because if you don't hear from them, that means there's no lawsuits going on, which is a good thing. But really, the, the COVID-19, a lot of issues that are out there, working with the school centers, and they're providing the staff just, you know, in, in time, information is what's needed. You know, there could be disputes among parents and child custody and these kinds of things, and they'll call the legal department immediately, and it all gets worked out again. Number three, wrapping it up, talent development and growth, none of this can happen unless we train our staffs. You saw a little bit about, not a little, you saw a lot of what we're going to be doing in the future, but we have our help desk, and this was to help our folks to be successful in whatever it was that they were taking on new. The website was developed, the, a lot of multiple, a lot of Facebook Live events that our team would do to go on and help members of our community, or help our own staffs as well. Talent development for the leaders, you can see it there, as well as what we were trying to do with our monthly tech support, the build-out of our tracking systems, the equity and bias training courses for administrators that continues. And then teacher development for staff members, we had over, again, I mentioned this before, as part of the goals, to make sure that we're training everybody up on what was a unique year. And what do we got here? Tech giveaways, this was our tech, the tech conference, which was a virtual tech conference for our teachers and, and staff to, to, to sharpen the saw on their technological skills. HR, you just heard from, from Raphael, we, you know, we don't want to underscore the fact that we're one of the best places to work for four consecutive years now. You saw our recruitment strategies, we opened this year without a vacancy, we either had a certified teacher or a long-term sub there. We didn't have a hard time recruiting during the pandemic, and that has increased every year because of what he said, which we really can't miss. We're branding the school district, so it's a place where people will want to work, and that's because of a culture and how we treat employees, and they'll stay. If they, if their voice is heard, nine times out of 10, they're going to stay in a school center, even though it may be a tougher school, if their voice is heard, they hear that they're being supported by their principal, they have a saying, things that are going on, and that they have input, and that we're developing them. So, great job in there. Pillar number four, finally, our fourth pillar would be communication, it's really communication, and then we have community involvement and customer servment, service. And Lydia Shop was, was very, very busy, and we talked a little bit about that before, on what they were getting, the information that they were getting out. We've increased Lucy Link now to over 30,000 subscribers, which is great. So, each week, when you look at that, you'll see the different things that are going on in the school centers, the positive news stories that are, go out, we've shared that with the board members, the media campaigns, kindergarten roundup, the media services, you can see the different projects that they've done. It's a 24/7 job, because every day, she gets contacted by the media about something that's going on. Fortunately, for the last few weeks, it's been very, very positive on things that are occurring, and we're able to, and because of personal relationships that she has developed with the local media, particularly the TV media, you know, they know that they'll call us at any time, and, and I'll go on, or she'll go on, or somebody will, or somebody will talk to them and answer questions, or brag on the school district. So, great job there. This is Mr. Perry, we talked about the HBCU, the college fairs, we were able to do that. He coordinated all the graduations, he's my liaison for the United Way and different community organizations. He, he and Bridget developed the guidelines for abandoned course with COVID, and also the Night of the Stars, which went virtual, a lot of things behind the scenes that Kevin does, and does a great job. And then this is Marty, really working again with our, with our different agencies, our government agencies, Fort Pierce, St. Lucie County, and Port St. Lucie, and the intergovernmental relations, you know, right now, we're working with the folks behind the scenes. Marty was instrumental in state legislation, particularly with impact fees. There was a lot of things that came out in the beginning, and he was a guru, and so, they were reached out to him from Tallahassee to try to get the better language in there, and better language was put in regarding the use of impact fees. The referendum update, I think that, I just want to show this to you real quick, Lydia's going to help me here. I'm going to go live to the page. Okay, so this is our page that's there on the webpage, the referendum. We'll be meeting with the committee, you can see the committee appointees that are here. I believe we meet with them in August, the next time that we'll meet, and all the information that's there, but when we go down and we, and we click on to the, this is, you can click on and see how much dollars went for our teachers, how much went for our police officers, our SROs. The mental health here, you can see that we were able to have, we have 20 now, social workers, four behavior specialists, can anybody else see that? 10 behavior techs, and three certified school counselors. Troy, can you see that? Okay. Okay, see, I'm doing that without glasses. All right. And then here, when we click on our, our dollars for the performing arts, we can go right on and, and go to a school, I'll just, let's see who we, this looks like Westgate, and we can click on and see that Westgate was allocated $9,203, they've spent $9,203, whatever, whatever it was to, to increase the arts, it could be in music, performance equipment, what do we got here? This is St. Lucie West. So, this is updated, this is updated each month by our, by our business department, and, and so that information is there, again, to be totally transparent with our community members on where the dollars go, and we'll meet with your community appointees next month, or in August, I believe in August is when we're scheduled to meet again. And then that's just around the corner in 2022, the renewal of that, and we'll have conversations about that in the future. To wrap it all up, these here, this was a virtual photograph of our principals at one of our principal meetings, and today, I've talked mostly about the district staff, because I already congratulated our principals and talked about them. But nothing would have happened in this district and have the, the year that we've had if we didn't have outstanding leaders in our school centers. And, and so, you know, I've commended them and congratulated them, but when you see them, just say thank you, because what I, we tell them, we tell people to do their jobs, you get workers, when we trust people to do their jobs, we get leaders, and we have great leadership because of the trust that we put in them. They trust us that we're going to get them the stuff that they need. If we're not getting to them, they let us know, but we're here to service and to serve them, but they're the forefront, they're the, they're the crew that makes everything that's happening. Why this year? That even though it was our most challenging year, to me, it was the most successful year that I've ever been involved in, because we were able to totally transform this school district, because of the firm foundation that was established years ahead. You saw Queen Townsend on there earlier, you know, by folks that were here years ahead to establish the foundation that we've built on. So, when this crisis had hit, and we're still in it, we're not looking, you know, we still monitor everything very, very closely. But I'll put this up against anywhere in the country as to the year that we've had because of the people that we empowered to get the job done, many of them that are here right now, and I do want to say thank you to them. That's why I took as much time as I did, because it's important that they know that I appreciate, and I know that the school board appreciates what they do, even though we don't see it all the time. The fact that you don't hear about it or get calls, you know that it's working. And again, a remarkable year, and our true, you know, our, you know, things, our culture was revealed, our trust was revealed, how we handle adversity was revealed, and what we do about that. And we're not perfect as a district, you know, but we're on the right track, and so very, very proud of the job that they've done. And we'll say all the nice things today, because at midnight tonight, today ended, and it's a new year, beginning July 1st, and we'll start, we've already started for next year and the challenges for next year. But just want to say thank you to the team, and thank you to the board for your support. This is a, what I've shared in review, and again, I'm doing this for Mrs. Richardson and Jack, and Mr. Kelly, is that my evaluation will be in two weeks, and if any board members want to sit down and chat privately, that's fine. If not, you know, it's, it goes before the board, and the evaluation really is a valuation of me, but I'm only, we're only successful because of the people in the room and the people that are in the school center, so it's really a valuation of our school district, which is why we do it this way. And again, we gave you the, the yearbook, to get into the details of it, again, it's well-done. A lot of our teams just saw it for the first time today as well, right, Lydia? We kind of kept this as a secret, so they're out, because I was looking at those that had stole a copy, and, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll charge money for it. We'll share this again, like I said, with our, with our community agencies, we'll share it with our PSL, St. Lucie County, and Fort Pierce Government, the community agencies that are out there, different groups and organizations that I meet with and that you all meet with, so this will be something that we can share. with and that you all meet with, so this will be something that we can share. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, Mr. Superintendent, all the words you said are absolutely true, but it does start at the top, and we applaud you as well. You have surrounded yourself with a phenomenal, phenomenal team, and, um, I think, board members, we need to stand and give this group a standing ovation.
Y'all can clap too for yourself.
Thank you very much to be, anytime any of us pick up the phone and call and say, what about this? If you're quick to respond, it's a joy to be in the community now, those are the true things. Um, I had to bother Mr. O'Leary once, um, from, I heard the school board conference, gave the answer, I'm ready to respond right away, and I always tell people, come into them in the community. You know, I trust this team more than I ever trusted a team before.
Oh, you couldn't hear me? Oh, well, I didn't have a teacher voice either. So, y- you just don't know how many people you reach from where you sit every day, and how many people depend on you. I mean, the numbers that you were sharing are phenomenal, it, it's just hard to imagine the hundreds of thousands of contacts and influences you make on people's lives, but you, as a team, rock. I can't tell you how much we appreciate you. Thank you for everything you do, every single moment of every single day, all of our children, all of our parents, all of us, it's just phenomenal, so thank you. That's a lot of information to dissect and, and go with, but fabulous, fabulous information. You know, and, uh, I, I've heard it said a lot this year that you can't let a crisis go to waste, but we had a good crisis, and by golly, it did not go to waste in St. Lucie Public Schools. Through the work of everyone here, Mr. Gent, your leadership, day after day, um, working with a good board, it's just really, really been a good year in what could have been a tragedy of a year, and has been a tragedy of a year in many places in, in the United States, so, we are indeed fortunate to have your leadership, um, to have such a phenomenal team working with us day in and day out, so, thank you as well. Did you have, any board members have any comment or about the, what we've heard?
I wanna say, I agree a hundred percent with everything that you said, and, uh, I applaud you for getting up and speaking to staff like that, that's great.
They're the ones that make it happen.
I do wanna say one thing, that, uh, being probably the oldest person in this building, uh, I look at things with, with an old-school thing, and, uh, and I, I know I'm gonna get, uh, looks from, uh, Dr. Mills because, uh, what I'm gonna talk about, because she says I never smile, look, look at the smile on her face, but I can't smile like that, and it's something that God gives certain people, and, uh, I was in yesterday, and I, we, you know, we've been at a lot of graduations, and we, we've been around, and I was in yesterday during lunchtime and for a couple hours, and I was in the building and, uh, and saw you, Mr. Sanchez, and a few other people the other day, and, well, just walking around at lunchtime and watching everybody, and, uh, let me put it this way, if, if you have a, a car, and it can be brand-new, like yours, Mrs. Halli, um, if it's dirty, if the car's dirty, it doesn't just, a shiny car always runs better, doesn't it, Ju, Wayne? When, when your car's clean, it just feels like it runs better, it, because it's clean and shiny, you know? And that's how I feel about this building, I, I just walk around yesterday, maybe because the masks are, are gone or whatever, but everybody was smiling, I mean, I, ninety percent of the people that I saw, Dr. Mills were, had a big smile on her face, and it just makes you feel so good, 'cause I can't do that, and they got a good reason to smile, because this is the best school district ever, I mean, I just, uh, I've been around staffs and, and, and government officials for twenty-five, twenty-six years, and served on so many in, right here in this area, in the Treasure Coast, and looked at other staffs and things, and there's ways to measure them, and, uh, we won't get into it, we've got a eight-hour full day coming up, we're gonna discuss things, maybe you can discuss at the end of this, until it's what we're gonna do, I've got some things here that I wanted to mention, but, it's just, the car's shining right now, and I just wanna keep it shiny, and it, uh, what a great year, what a great staff, and, uh, and Wayne, you, you know, it's an old New York saying, again, I'm the oldest guy in the building, many of you never heard this, if you're from New York, you might've, but the fish stinks from the head, that's an old, old saying. You never heard that, Troy? Never heard it, right? Well, it's an old saying, I don't know whether it's related with gangsters and mafia, or it's just New York, but it's an old, old saying, anybody ever heard that, anybody? The fish thinks from, ah, there you go, Marty, yeah, it's true. Also, it's the opposite way, uh, if the fish, the head is good, if the head's thinking, great, and, and leads the other schools to fish well, uh, the fish, when you catch them, they taste real good, you know? And our head fish here is doing a great job, and I'm really, really proud of you, buddy, you really are. Now, now we're gonna get into one other thing, we saw, we saw a side of Mr. Gent last week, uh, Troy and I were at, uh, what do we call that meeting we had? Administrative, what was it?
Superintendent's Summit, that's where we bring our principals and our team leaders back in, uh,
Yeah.
At the end of the year.
I call it a good time, it was a show.
Yeah, it's a good time.
And, uh, of course, Mrs. Halli and, and Dr. Mills were away getting information for us, but, uh, Mr. Ingersoll and I were there, and, uh, this guy's an entertainer, uh, you, how many were there at that, you guys were all there? You saw what he did, okay, and, uh, the, uh, highlight of the, of the whole morning was when you were gonna jump off the stage, and you decided not to, I wanna tell you, Dr. Prince was rooting for you to jump off the stage. Like a five-foot stage, and you didn't do it, and I'm glad, the only thing is, Mr. Ingersoll really showed you up because he put his cape on, jumped up on the stage, and jumped off the stage, and everything that he said about you.
He didn't jump off.
Yeah, you did, you did, yes, he, he was good. Let me, let me elaborate a little bit, I get it, but, uh, you did a great job, Wayne, and, uh, just shows, uh, everybody supported you in the way, everybody cheered for you, and, uh, we are solid as a rock, and I'm, I'm proud to be, I'm glad I re-in for school board, uh, it really was as good as everybody said it was gonna be, they said you'd have a, you're gonna love it, the, the school couldn't have a better school board, they're great, got Mr. Gent there, the whole crew is great, they're all right, and this was said to me by leaders of not just this county, but other counties, told me how great this school board was, and I was gonna enjoy myself if I got elected, and I do, and I'm gonna try to s- smile more, Dr. Mills, I will, I really will, you guys are great, keep the shine, keep the smile going, I'm so happy, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give one award out right now, the smile that I had, the greatest smile, every time I look at her, but Dr. Helen Wild, and she did it today to me, I look around and she smiles right at me, makes me feel good, keep the smile going, everybody watch her, get that smile going, so, thank you for letting me talk, forget the fish stinks from the head, I won't ever use that again, but, you do a great job, Wayne, I'm proud of everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Jack, I, I certainly do appreciate you, Jack, um, we've been around a while, I look around this room, and I see Helen, Bill, Lydia, Marty, and, um, we used to go to the city of Port St. Lucie, and, and, um, it was uncomfortable, and, Jack, you always supported us, but there were some board members there that really wanted our butts in a sling, and almost, you know, split the, split the county governments, split the school board, and, and split the cities, and it was very uncomfortable for a period of time, and, um, don't ever take, uh, you know, things for granted, because, um, you guys are superstars. Um, I look at basketball teams, and, you know, have superstars on them, and they have all these egos, and they, they split, and it takes a great coach to pull them together and say, hey, you know, let's work together as a team and, and, and do that, because that's what we have here. You know, I look around, and each one of you have different departments, and, and you far exceed our expectation, and we're so grateful for that, and as a board, we have to understand that, and, and understand our role as, as, as policymakers and, and, um, community activists, that, that they have to do their job, and, and they're the leaders, because, you know, we just look good, you know, people see us, and it's like, I didn't do anything, you know, I just got elected, you guys are the ones that do the work, and, and, and we're, we're so grateful for that, and Wayne, for, for what you've done, I, I, again, I can go to community meetings now, and, and Marty can go there, and we don't have issues, we can sit down and talk, and it's because of the relationships that you guys have made, and particularly you, Wayne, that, you know, the city, uh, city managers and county managers, and you can sit and talk and, and get things accomplished, and, uh, and, Jack, you know what I'm talking about, because it, it, it's a, it shows, and there's confidence, there's confidence amongst our staff, our support staff, and, um, all the way from our bus driver to our principals, so thank you again, you know, words, words cannot say enough.
I can't echo, can't echo enough what, uh, Mr. Ingersoll just said, do not take it for granted, we got a great family here, don't take it for granted.
Certainly, Dr. Mills.
I've got a long list of things to say, but I'll try to shorten it. First of all, thank you. This is something that we can take all around this community, we have the facts here, outside of my Bible, this will be my next book for a while, okay? Especially with an election coming up in twenty-two, but, thank you for the knowledge, you know, because we can share this knowledge, you know, and we need to study it, I encourage the board members, study this book, right? Because, um, our community need to know what we're doing, and we just cannot share it enough in order for them to understand, because it's something about the human mind, it just kinda defaults to negativity, and so, you gotta help educate people, is what we need to do as educators in the community, and this book is gonna do that, it's so, um, thorough, you know, um, the presentation, Mr. Gent, was very thorough, and was very phenomenal, and I, I hope that if, if it's not in there, then we need to take the book, and we need to take the presentation, and really get it as much as we can inside of us so that we can share the good things that's going on. You know, I'm one that always says, there's room for improvement, I'm not perfect, you're not perfect, you're not perfect, but we sure are pressing toward the mark, and to be able to say that brings me great comfort and great joy, and you, I feel as if all of you are like my family after this particular session, you know, and this is how we need to continue to be, um, that, that book changed the world, did we get one? If I did, I'm, I'm, shame on me.
No, no, we'll get them, we'll get them for the board.
Okay, I'm gonna say shame on me, maybe I got one that didn't, okay.
We haven't given them out, um, a couple people bought them, I had one given to me by one of our principals who read it, and, uh, so, um,
Well, I like to buy one.
We'll get, we'll get them for the board.
Okay.
I gave you a good deal.
Yes, I love, I love John Maxwell too, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, I was interested in knowing, and, and it doesn't have to be shared now, you may need to go back and, um, look at it, but I just wanted to know how the vaccines were going along with the students right now, if parents are responding to it, you know, what nu- the numbers are, and that's something that I wanted to put out, that I like to get information back. Uh, I really appreciate, um, when you said, Mr. Gent, about the summer, uh, school, calling it summer camp, because we're running a summer camp right now as well, when I say we, our organi- organization Save Our Children, and what we realize more than ever before, that in the summertime, the kids wanna have fun, and they don't wanna think that they're going to school, so we slip it in when they get there, you know, with the, thank you for the spark packets, we do that every, twice a week, and working through that, uh, so we slip in the academics, but to be, for kids in the summertime, for it to be called a camp, and something that they can really have fun at, they anticipate it, and then you bring in the academics along with this, I appreciate it when you said that. Expulsions, I wanna bring up expulsions, we have not had an expulsion come before us, uh, and, to the two new board members, in years, and, when I first came on in two thousand and ten, it, every month was expulsions, and most of them, I would say, ninety-nine percent of them, were African-American males. We have not had an expulsion in years, you have no idea how much I appreciate that, and, um, so we have been changing our world, our school world, and, um, and, and I appreciate everything that each one of you are doing, this book broke down all departments, and, and, you, thank you for each of you, in your several different places, I started listing down the different departments as we were going through it, was it this book, or was it the presentation, is it in here as well?
Yeah, it's, presentation was a summary of what's in the book.
Oh, no, it was in the,
So it's a summary of what was in there.
Mm-hmm. The complaints, I hardly get any complaints right now, from parents, different departments, not just expulsion, not get, transportation, don't hear from anybody anymore as far as complaints, so, um, yeah, knock on wood. I mean, not to say that I don't get any, but it's very seldom now, that says that you are doing a tremendous job in your departments, and as a board member, I certainly do appreciate I, we do have a phenomenal school system, I am very proud of St. Lucie County Public Schools, and I will tell it wherever I go, thank you so much for your work.
And just a reminder, board members, in order for that to keep going, that's where we come in, we're the activists, we're the cheerleaders for the school district, so to take all of this phenomenal information that we've been given, there should be no misconceptions in our community as long as we continue to let everyone know all the good work that's going on here. So, Mr. Superintendent, that concludes your presentations, and we have no other business to come before us today, other than as a reminder, you all, that we are July thirteenth board meeting, will be at nine o'clock in the morning, thank you, Ms. Harrison, for sending that out yesterday with all of the information on it, um, July will be a busy month for us with two board meetings, um, our master board training, um, and anything else that comes in between, so, I look forward to seeing all of you at the very early, latest on July thirteenth, nine AM, right here. Thank you so much, and again, thanks to all of you, I know, giving up time to be here today was, some of you I know are, I've got this to do and that to do, and that's absolutely how this school district runs so well, so, go, be blessed, thank you for everything, and we are adjourned.